Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager Chapa. I think they've got this video queued up to play now.
Someone who's dependable, reliable, really willing to get in the trenches and dig with, to get the job done.
The main thing about Jennifer is her focus on customer service. I mean, she is all about, be it internal or external. I always get kudos from those customers that she solved their problem.
I love her willingness to step in and help when needed. I've been lucky enough to work with her twice now, and she has always treated me with respect and encouragement. What the next step should be. And I just think that says a lot about her as an employee, but also as a colleague.
She has a friendly attitude. She's funny. She's very intelligent. And I have always admired the way that she helps others without any hesitation. She's usually willing to help out, no matter what it is.
Having the opportunity for my colleagues to recognize me, it makes me feel valued. It makes me feel seen, and it makes me feel heard by some of the most respected people that I have in my life. And just being offered the opportunity of an ambassador would mean more than the world to me.
You know, for those that don't know, you know, we've worked really hard at Development Services to ensure that what we're facing in our customer experience is going to be a positive experience when folks are dealing with the city of Fort Worth. In the beginning of fiscal year 24, we created a program, sort of like the Employee of the Month, Employee of the Year program, but we call it Ambassador. We were looking for individuals that represent the standards that the city manager and this council have put into place for Development Services and those who work for the city with regard to our interaction with customers and one another as staff. And so, basically, every quarter, we issue Ambassador of the Quarter awards. And then, at the end of the year, we issue an Ambassador of the Year award to the ambassador who has made the most impact. And I'm honored to stand before you today to introduce you to Jennifer Ezerneck. And I'll say one little quick thing about her. I mean, she's homegrown. I don't know how many folks know. I know Mayor Pro Tim knows her because she works on a lot of your projects. But Jennifer has about 20 years with the city of Fort Worth. Her mother retired after about 30 years with the city of Fort Worth. In fact, her twin sister works for Development Services as well. So she's homegrown, and we're not letting her get away. So Jennifer Ezerneck.
It's been an honor to be chosen as Ambassador of the Year for last year. I do appreciate everyone with their hard work, and thank you for allowing me to support you. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Jennifer, you don't get to leave. You have to stand there and let me make you blush. I had a project that just seemed to be going nowhere. Very important project. So important, there's a train station at this project right now. And so, last year sometime, you know, I started convening weekly meetings. And it was still kind of hard until Jennifer came along. And you know you are a shining star when a developer asks the question, who is that lady running these meetings? And so, she truly is no drama. She truly is holding everybody accountable. And this is a business where people can slide through the tracks, through the cracks if they want to. And Jennifer will say, did you get that? And you understand your deadline? In a real nice way. And so, Jennifer, I just really appreciate all that you brought, all that you bring. And it's just a pleasure to know you, and thank you for the harmony you bring to the Lakes of River Trails project. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim.
Jennifer, I'll just be briefly, real brief. I want to say thank you. I have personally observed in several meetings with developers your incredible spirit for this work and incredible heart for this work. You know, you have always been thoughtful and kind to everyone who comes on the calls. And also, I'm very clear about the expectations for development in the city. And you've done it all with brilliance and grace. And so, I couldn't think of DJ a better person to give the award to, although you have a team full of rock stars. But congratulations and well deserved. Here are your flowers.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, DJ, and congrats, Jennifer. Well done. I now want to call up Robert Sterns to introduce his newest employee.
Thank you, City Manager Chapa, mayors and members of council. After what has been a very long search, it feels like, I am pleased to introduce newest member of our team, Lance Randall, who is our Deputy Director for Economic Development. Lance is an award-winning economic development practitioner with 29 years of experience in the fields of economic development, community development, workforce development, housing, tourism, government relations, and business management. He has served at the Macon Economic Development Commission, the Greater Macon Chamber of Commerce, the Seattle Office of Economic Development, and was Executive Director of the Black Business Association of Oregon. So we are very pleased to have Lance here. Lance, please come up and join us. He is a graduate of Morgan State University in Baltimore in political science. And as you can tell, he is a much better dresser than I am. So I've got to, I've got to update my wardrobe game to hang out with Lance. So again, Lance, just wanted to have you welcome to board.
Thank you, Robert, for the introduction. I'm honored to be here in the city of Fort Worth to work for the Office of Economic Development. I've been here a month. And I tell you, we have a great team, a great leader, and a lot of great opportunities. I'm looking forward to continue my work for the organization, for the city, to serve the businesses, the residents, and of course, the leaders of our city. So thanks for the opportunity.
Welcome.
We're going to move into informal reports. We're going to move up informal report regarding, let me find it here.
The metal theft.
The metal theft unit update, number 0027. So.
Mayor Pro Tim Bivens, I know you may have questions or wanted them to walk through this. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I wanted to let the council know how this came about. My office, like I'm sure y'all's offices too, started receiving complaints of internet service being out for extended times. At one point, I had one neighborhood without internet service for more than two weeks. And that was totally unacceptable. And so, I called my former partner in crime, Linda Karam, at AT&amp;T, and we convened a work group with Chief Nogues, police, and other departments. And so, this is to bring you all up to date on where we are now. And Mayor, I don't know if this is something that TJ would at least, you know, take a look at, but it's affecting not just the city of Fort Worth and not just the city of Dallas. It's happening nationwide. People are stealing copper. And when you depend on your internet to have your visual doctors visit, that's more than you having to check your TikTok or your social media. It impacts your life. And so, that's the reason why we're here. And thank you all for moving this up because my mom's in the hospital.
Mayor, Council, thanks for having us. As Gina set the table really well, this is a really big issue, not only across our city, but across the country. I'm going to turn this over to Anthony White. He's over our metal theft unit. He's going to kind of step through the IR instead of, it's a lot of information in there, but he's going to be able to break it down pretty well for you. And afterwards, we'll take some questions if you need.
Thank you, Chief. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us. And I'd like to start out with an overview of this IR. And to touch it and to add a little bit more to what Mayor Pro Tim Bivens said, this is impacting every single one of us in this city. When a copper thief, when a metal thief disrupts critical infrastructure, it impacts not only City Hall, but hospitals, post offices, and every facet of our life. This is a national trend. This is not just an impact here in Fort Worth. A simple Google search, just typing in AT&amp;T cable theft, it is nationwide in every city in America. And here in Fort Worth, we are, in particular, we're tired of it. As a metal theft unit supervisor, I've got my officers here with me as well. I've provided some statistics. In the past four years, in a comparison of two years from 2020 to 2022, up from 2022 to 2024, we have experienced a 545% increase in AT&amp;T cable theft alone in this city. That is exponential. I don't know of any other crime in this city that is impacted, that has such an impact in a two- to four-year span, like 545%. Overall, metal theft, we have a 53% increase. And when I say metal theft, most people say, are we talking about gold and silver? No, we're talking about large cable, communication cable, critical infrastructure, copper. And the cable that I passed around the room there that Chief Aldrich has, that is about approximately one foot of cable. And Officer Wright looked it up just a few minutes ago, and that is $4.33 per pound as of today in the metal industry. So that is about $20 there in Chief's hand that we just passed out. And when these thieves are hitting us here in Fort Worth, they're not getting one foot. They're taking out 200 to 300 feet, sometimes more at a time. A recent, just a recent blind search, just recently by one of our officers that we have on loan to the unit, revealed that a couple, and I can't talk much about it, go in depth about it because it's an active investigation, but there's a couple here in Fort Worth that in the last two months, they have profited and put in their pocket $40,000 stealing AT&amp;T cable. We've tracked that down. We've identified some people, and that investigation is moving forward. I'd like to highlight some of the amazing work that my team in the Fort Worth Metal Theft Unit is doing. Officer Wright and Officer Purcelli are here in the room. And in 2024, they made over 20 arrests particularly pertaining to metal theft alone. Now, some of those crimes did not involve just metal theft. You may have, you may remember seeing in the news, up on Northwest 28th Street in Northwest Division, Officer Wright wrote a warrant. And after that warrant was executed, over 20 stolen vehicles were recovered that had been stolen all across Texas and the United States in the backyard of that house. I'd also like to highlight the collaborative work group that Mayor Pro Tim Bivens set up. We've established a great work group that includes multiple city departments, AT&amp;T, Charter Spectrum, and many more. That work group has led us to, we were recently involved as a unit at a critical infrastructure summit at Verizon headquarters, where there were dozens of, dozens of law enforcement as well as partners in the communications industry. So we collaborated and have met to talk, what can we do as an industry? What can we do to help these companies as law enforcement? And we're excited about that approach moving forward. To talk a little bit more about what the unit's doing, not only are they getting assigned cases to investigate metal theft, but they also inspect the scrap yards here in Fort Worth, the metal recycling yards, to ensure compliance, to make sure that they are up to industry standards. And many of these inspections that they've done over the past year have been, have gone very well with working with the, with the management. The management, most of the, most of the management of these recycling entities here in Fort Worth, they want to work with law enforcement to help make us a safer city and to identify thieves. And it's been, it's been a good relationship over the past couple of years. So those inspections are ongoing to ensure compliance. And during those inspections, Officer Wright and Officer Purcelli also provide education to these scrap yards on what to look for and how to notify us. So. And then, lastly, I'd like to look, I'd like to talk about the legislative efforts. So some of you may be aware, but catalytic converters were a major issue being stolen over the past decade. And they spiked up until two years ago in the 88th legislature. When the 88th legislature passed laws, stricter laws, on simple possession of a catalytic converter that doesn't belong to you, we've seen catalytic converter theft go down. Meanwhile, we've seen critical infrastructure assaults on telecommunication wire skyrocket. So we are working with AT&amp;T, and I believe AT&amp;T is here today as well. We're working hand in hand with AT&amp;T and with Spectrum to craft a bill, to craft legislation. And we're working with our lawmakers down in Austin to hopefully pass a bill in the 89th legislature to enhance punishment for critical infrastructure assault moving forward. And lastly, I would just like to thank Mayor Pro Tim Bivens for putting together that work group that she's established to collab, it's a collaborative work group. And it's, it takes all of us, it takes all of us in this community. And for any citizens, if you see something, say something. If you see somebody climbing up a pole and cutting a wire, call 911 and report it because that's most likely going to affect thousands of residents' internet, including your own. So, and I'll take any questions that you have.
Any questions, Council? Yes, Charlie?
So just one, so one thing for that information, that's great. If there's three people, I can't stand it. First Amendment auditors, liars, and thieves. So on the thief side, understanding we may have to wait for legislation to come out with stricter laws on what we can and can't do, I think that's going to be a great first step. Shouldn't have a lot of issues there. But in the meantime, have we noticed any issues? Because I know a lot of times our police officers are told, you know, our jails are full, so we can't take anyone, you know, violent felonies only. You know, these type of people, if they're willing to commit these kind of crimes, they're probably not going to show up in court if you just cite and release them. So are you getting any help from county at all? Or what are the other concerns that we should be looking at as a city in how we handle this issue?
Well, moving forward, I'm exploring the option of creating a regional task force. I would love to, I would love to see a collaborative effort regionally between Dallas, Fort Worth, Arlington, and all the surrounding jurisdictions. Because this is going to take a metroplex effort. Because when they hit Halton City, when they hit Sansom Park, that is impacting Fort Worth residents as well, because those lines cross jurisdictions. Just because there's a city line doesn't mean that, that the, that the cut in Sansom Park doesn't impact our community. So I think a collaborative effort, a regional effort, is warranted to combat this effectively.
And Councilman Lower, on the jail situation, we've been able to kind of resolve some of those issues. And so, over the past couple of months, we haven't really had an issue with our jail overcrowding, so we haven't put restrictions on our officers on arresting people.
Okay, got it. So these, if these folks are caught, then is it, I guess, what are they being, if you catch them in the act of digging up a cable, for example, what are they being charged with at that point? Because.
They're being charged with, with the, with the theft of recyclable material, copper, bronze. It's actually, it's actually specific to metal in the Texas penal code.
Thank you.
And Mayor, before we go to the next speaker, I'd like to ask AT&amp;T's lead investigator to come to the podium, because we want to know what AT&amp;T is doing with this problem. And so, as he's coming, I know we'll take some more questions.
Councilwoman Williams.
And thank you all for this report. I certainly understand the impact of when people make decisions like this. Can you tell me a little bit more about the people who are choosing to, you know, steal wires? And what's their, what have you seen as the motivation? And, you know, tell us more about who they are and their story.
Yeah, this is, this is, there's really, this is all walks of life. People, people taking this stuff, all ages, young, old. It really is just a, just everyone. So these, these people are, they, they know the scrap industry very well. So they're not looking at taking people's aluminum cans out of their trash, because aluminum cans, aluminum is very cheap compared to copper. Copper is one of the most expensive, one of the more pricey metals to be able to recycle. So that's, that's their target.
That's helpful. I envision and hope a world in the future where people don't have to steal to survive.
Yes.
Anthony, as, sorry, as you're starting to crank down on these thefts, are you seeing that the numbers are coming down a little bit, or they're still staying consistent?
We're still, he can, he can talk more about the experience of the cuts that they're having, but we are still, we are still brushing the surface as far as the number of, the number of cuts that are taking place.
Hello, my name is Curtis from Girdle Global Security Investigation with AT&amp;T. And I want to say I appreciate the collaborative effort with the police departments, Mayor Pro Tim and the other members here. Cable theft has been an ongoing problem. What AT&amp;T has done to help with those efforts, we do have a $10,000 reward leading to the arrest and conviction of cable theft suspects. The answer to this question here as far as arrests being made, you still can't pull out the rule of law that is, 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 most of these offenses are state jail felonies. But at the same time, most of, and speaking with the DAs, they're nonviolent crimes, and offenders do get out. We've had over 250, I mean, 250 arrests last year alone in the Dallas metroplex. 80% of that on the Dallas County side because of the bigger plants as they move forward this way. So in working with the metal thefts, now we're educating them on, because crime is just moving. We're getting caught here, we're getting moved, oh, we got a new area to play with. So we continue with our collaborative efforts, but we want to put that out there as far as the reward, which goes up until November 2025. Those calls are coming in, we're following, working with the PDs. Every person that's been arrested have been, either have a misdemeanor or felony record. There are multiple offenders, I've found people arrested more than once in a three-month period. Could have been four crimes, all state jail felonies. But they're sitting at home waiting on court. Meanwhile, going back out there doing the same thing. You know, so, but I think this is a good start. But our focus to be here is to let y'all know about that $10,000 reward, which has been advertised, but that has helped with us reducing, it's still going on. We're working as fast as we can to upgrade to fiber plants. That's not always feasible in every area, just because of where they are. That has a lot to do with it as well. But coming to this side, yes, they are targeting a lot. And they're not just their everyday off-the-street person. This is organized, from groups that cut, to groups that pick up, to groups that go splice. It's, it's assigned to this. So that's the most important of this, but we're going to continue to work with the Fort Worth PD, and because any arrest is a good arrest, because once they're identified, that leads to where they sell it, how broad is the network? So those are multiple things that come into effect with just arrests made.
I'd also like to add that our Real-Time Crime Center here at Fort Worth PD has done a phenomenal job. We've received calls over the weekend. The Real-Time Crime Center will call and say, hey, we've got this right now in progress. On the other line, we're getting Spectrum. Or on the other line, we've got AT&amp;T. So it is truly a collaborative effort. And our Real-Time Crime Center is, and our electronic, our ESU, they're being able to, they're putting up, they're putting up cameras all over the city so that we can identify these, these crimes in progress so that we can respond effectively.
Any other questions, Council? Thank you, gentlemen, very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Council.
Our next report is DFW International Airport's Bond Finance Package and Chapter Three Updates. We have Executive Vice President Chris Pointe here from DFW to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for Chris, Council? No? We're easy, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next report's 2025 Housing Tax Credit Resolution Recommendations. Chad LaRox here to answer any questions, but you should have received an updated version of this report yesterday.
Councilmember Hill?
I think the only concern I have is on Legacy Park. I just want to bring up publicly state about the, I'm concerned about the density issue with the new Harmony School going in, the North Elementary School. There's a Super Walmart in Aldi and Albertson's all up against single-family homes. And so, I just want staff to be aware of the traffic issues that are already there between Academy Drive and White Settlement that we're already facing, and just want to make sure that we're making a good choice.
Okay, thank you. And we'll, at our next, next policy next year, we can look at maybe incorporating some additional, some criteria in our policy for evaluation.
Councilwoman Crane? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Carlos. Maybe not. Carlos, are you there? I bet we can hear you. I don't think we can see you. We'll just ask offline. All good, Chad? Thank you.
And I just wanted to mention, I think Jade mentioned that the Reserve at Parkwood, it's the last one on the table there, they did withdraw after, after we'd already went out that Jenna posted. Thank you.
No, we cannot. You sound like a robot. Yeah. You may have to try to reconnect, Carlos. I'm sorry. You're okay, Chad. Go ahead.
Want to move on?
Yes, let's move.
Next one is Congregate Living Facilities for Persons with Disabilities. Lashandra Strinkfellows here from Development Services.
Councilwoman Beck?
Lashandra, if you could, come on down, please. While you're on your way down here, I want to thank you and the rest of your staff for putting this together. We've been working on congregate living for a while now, which started with the boarding homes and now has morphed into this. And this is the first time that I've read a description of all of our different types of facilities and understood what those were, because they seem to be a jumbled mess in our zoning code, in our land use tables. And so, thank you for, for drilling down and really giving us something that we can understand. So my first question is, we see the different types, community homes, boarding homes, group homes. For clarification for those watching, boarding homes are the only type of facility, congregate living facility, that the city actually has jurisdiction over, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And so, for the community homes and then for the group homes, what, can you just describe what limited power the city has to regulate these particular facilities?
So community homes and group homes are regulated by the state. The state will actually issue, I can't remember if they call them licenses or permits, but those are under control of the state. The state also determines the number. So for example, community homes, the state has determined that six are allowed, and they're also allowed in residential districts. So the city, you know, follows suit. For group homes, the number actually is a little bit more. One of the things that we've been talking about, which was also a reason for this IR, is there are some other categories that we are aware that the state has. So the city is also looking at making sure that we are being consistent with what the state is doing. So we'll be adding a couple of other categories as well.
Okay, great. I'm glad to see you're doing that, because it can be quite confusing to applicants and to council members before these changes. The, the next thing I want to address is the half-mile limitation that we have. So community homes have a half-mile radius with any existing, same with boarding homes. And I believe group, group homes do not have the half-mile, correct? Or do they as well?
That is correct.
Okay. But that's like to like. So in theory, you could have a boarding home next to a community home?
Yes. That is correct.
Okay. And I just want to publicly express my, my desire for us to go with the option of registering those group homes.
The community homes and group homes.
Yes, ma'am. So through some work we did for Wedgewood, we determined that we weren't registering these homes, so we weren't technically enforcing the half-mile radius because we, to the extent that we can, we weren't able to do so because we weren't registering, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so, that won't, will that impact the, the new registration process? Will that impact any of these facilities currently on the ground?
So what we'd like to do, we'd probably follow a very, we're still talking with staff and talking with co-compliance with, about that. We're probably going to follow a very similar process to what we did for the boarding homes. And so, eventually, you know, we want all of them to be registered. But, you know, we'll probably start out with registering new ones as they come in and then have a process whereby, as we find out, you know, about existing ones, that we get those registered as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate all your work on this.
Thank you, Lashandra.
Lashandra is up for the next, if there's any questions. And that's Council-initiated zoning changes for certain properties along Montgomery Street and for the Botanic Gardens.
Jay, I was just going to make a comment on this. So the majority of the properties that were included in this IR are currently Zone J, and so have been working with city staff to get those to align with the comprehensive plan. Right now, they do not. I do want to thank Dana, Stephen Murray, I forget it.
Lynn Jordan.
Lynn Jordan, thank you, and for their hard work on this, because this really has been a group effort. And thank you to all the property owners that have agreed to meet with me, even going through this in September. And I think we've landed in a good spot where we can make sure that the corridor of Montgomery Street is protected moving forward.
Next item is engagement of a consultant to advise the city for the select- Next item is engagement of a consultant, uh, to advise the city for the selection of a developer, master developer, uh, for the Commerce Street property. This is, once we straighten out the property at the convention center, the available property, uh, this consultant will advise city staff on, on this, go through a process to select the master developer. If there's any questions, William Johnson's here, answer any questions.
Any questions from counsel? No?
Next one's funding of the Will Rogers Memorial Center Coliseum renovations. And Michael Crumb's here to answer any questions. Uh, next is Nextdoor application information. If there's any questions on this.
Councilmember Bivens?
Absolutely.
Assistant Chief Aldridge is here.
And chief, the backstory to this is, most people think if they complain, griper just raised hell on Nextdoor, that the council person knows that there's a problem, but they don't know that we don't, we don't see beyond our neighborhood. So I've always asked you guys, couldn't you amend this, because you are the ones who brought this here?
We are the ones that brought this here, yes. So, um, looking, looking at the, the IR and a little bit of research, uh, Nextdoor App was kind of established in 2011. Uh, Fort Worth, uh, kind of took it under its wing in 2012, and although it's not our program, we helped promote that program to the neighborhoods, um, because we wanted them to communicate with one another, um, because if you kind of think about where social media was in 2011, 2012, I kind of did some research, um, and it was really kind of interesting that Pinterest and Google Plus had just come on the scene. Snapchat, you were able now to do 10-second videos. Facebook basically had a public IPO and Tinder was launched. So just think about how long ago that was compared to where we are now. And I know that you guys, you guys get requests not only through Facebook, but also through Nextdoor App. Um, our limitations on, on Nextdoor App is that if we didn't post it, we can't take it down. Um, if we did post, like, a actual post for crime prevention or something like that, and there are some negative posts on there, we can modify those, but if we're not the authors of that, then we kind of have some limitations in that arena. So I understand that maybe they do complain a lot on Nextdoor, and they think that maybe you monitor it, but really, it, it's a very small segment, and it's important to note that we have 722 neighborhoods with over 347,000 people that are on Nextdoor. So that's a very large contingent of our citizens that actually use Nextdoor. They may all not be griping, I mean, they may actually be using it as it's intended.
Any other questions, Gina? Thank you very much.
And the last, uh, report is, um, going out for a request for proposals for insurance broker of record for our risk management group. We haven't done this in several years. We'd like to proceed with that.
Looks like no questions from counsel. Jay, before we move, um, into work session reports, I think Carlos wanted to try to, try again related to the IR, I think he just wanted something on the record.
Correct, thank you, Matty. Does that sound any better now?
Yes.
Great, okay. Uh, for, uh, 25-0022, Resolution 2025 Housing Tax Credit Resolution Recommendations. I wanted it on the record, uh, for the Irma Park proposal, I had concerns, uh, staff is aware, and so is the applicant, of the timeliness of public outreach. They have made, uh, efforts and, uh, better efforts, uh, to make sure they connect with folks. I'm still getting phone calls that people do not know about this proposal. Another point that I had some concern with is that January 7th, I believe, memory serves, was a cutoff to consider other, uh, things such as senior housing. That time, uh, that, that deadline came and went, and people didn't know about it, and that couldn't be considered anymore. So my concerns, you know, are noted for the record.
Thank you, Carlos. Counsel, that's the completion of our IRs. I'll move into any questions regarding changes in memberships on boards of commissions, or any questions or comments related to significant zoning cases pertaining to the February 11th count meeting that's next week? Anything on MNC log? Great. We'll move into our first presentation, which today is a public health update from our very own former council member, Brian Byrd, Dr. Brian Byrd, who's here on behalf of Tarrant County Public Health. Brian, it's great to see you, and thank you for joining us today.
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, counsel, good to see everybody. Yeah, come on back. We'll both be back here together, and, uh, we'll figure out how to use this clicker here. So it's great to see, it was a lovely experience walking in and seeing familiar faces and, um, getting some hugs. And just a quick observation as I was sitting here, you guys are really crispy getting business done. I thought it was good, uh, so, so way to go. It's, um, great cities don't just happen, right? You've got, you have to steward them, and I appreciate all of you all that are doing that. Okay, the reason we're here, at your invitation, is to talk about the latest outbreaks in flu that we're having, and probably more importantly, to talk about bird flu. Why are we going to talk about bird flu? Well, thus far, bird flu hasn't caused us too much trouble, because it's mostly, uh, we're completely jumping from cows to humans or birds to humans. However, this virus is mutating very quickly. Just two weeks ago, the CDC put out a health advisory, and they asked all of the hospitals in the United States to make sure that they subtype every flu case that is hospitalized. What does that mean? Well, it means that before somebody who's hospitalized with flu leaves the hospital, we want to know if that's bird flu, uh, so that we can do our job in public health and track down the contacts and make sure that doesn't spread around. So that's how seriously the CDC is taking it. We thought it'd be great for you as leaders to know a little bit about that, so when people ask you about it, you can speak a little bit about it and understand how we are preparing for that. So, with that being said, I like to hear from experts. Uh, so with me is Tarrant County's Chief Epidemiologist, Russ Jones, who knows more about this in his pinky finger than all of us put together. Uh, he'll run through the slides, and we'll take some questions after if you would, if you have any. So with that being said, Russ, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, thanks for having us. We're ready to talk a little bit about highly pathogenic avian influenza, and in particular one called H5N1. Um, there are many different avian influences, all the influences that we have originated somewhere in a bird at some time. There are others, but the one that we're concerned about is H5N1. This is a little bit of its timeline, we've been watching this organism for about 30 years. It's, it first arrived, or first was noticed in Guangdong Province of China in 1996. Um, it caused some disease, about 18 cases in humans, uh, half of them died, but a lot of bird deaths. And then it, it disappeared for a while, it reemerged in 2003 through 2005. And from there, it spread to other countries, mostly in birds through wildfowl, uh, waterfowl that are wild, and, and the flight paths in their migration where, um, it was spread to other, other animals, in particular poultry. Now, highly pathogenic avian influenza is a intestinal disease in birds, so it's not a matter of a duck sneezing. Uh, it's amazing what birds do. And then, when they're around, uh, domesticated flocks, they can, uh, transmit the disease there, and it can decimate a domestic flock of, of poultry. Uh, in 2020, um, oh, and let me back up, 2003, 2005, there was a number of serious illnesses in China and Indonesia and Southeast Asia, mostly among people who, uh, who raised and depended on, uh, poultry for subsistence, uh, living for their livelihood. Literally, they were around the chickens all the time, and it caused serious illness in the deep lung with pneumonia. So it was a virus of concern, but not a whole lot of cases, and very, very limited human transmission was reported. In fact, some of it was even doubted. It disappeared for a while, but it didn't go away. In 2020, a new genotype of H5N1 called Klay 2.3.4.4B, and that's the only time I'll reference it like that, um, made an emergence in, in Europe. And by that fall, it had spread around Europe. In 2022, we started seeing outbreaks here in the United States, and that's the first real time that we've had a problem with H5N1. It's a result of the migratory birds, waterfowl, going north, mixing, and, and it's not a, it's not like the European waterfowl mixed with the North American waterfowl. It's actually kind of an accident, but it did happen, and in the flyways back, um, we started seeing large outbreaks in the United States among, uh, backyard flocks and commercial flocks. The first human case occurred in 2022. I don't know if you remember back then, but eggs did go up a bit in way of price. So in 2023, additional animal infections were noted, and this is one of the things we'll, we'll have a kind of a mental model, I'll put up in a minute about pandemic potential. Uh, but one of the things we look for is, is it being spread in other animals? Is it going from birds to something else? Yes, uh, just about all mammals now have been affected, and, uh, in the world, uh, the Klay has spread around the world, and so a, a number of mammals, for example, about 30,000 die off of seals and walruses along the Chilean coast, uh, back in 2023. Of all things, polar bear in the northernmost part of Alaska died, cultured it or PCR'd it, and it was this bug. Mountain lions are susceptible, all felines, bobcats, we'll get to cats, house cats in a little bit. Uh, additional animal detection, so this is a, a virus that's mutating, as Dr. Byrd said. When I say bird flu, I'm talking B-I-R-D, uh, not B-Y-R-D. So, he's tired of that joke. But anyways, it was, uh, it's jumping to other animals, and it's able to mutate and go from other animals. What that means is, it's changing enough, maybe perhaps, that we're in contact with an animal that's close enough to us and will have cases. In 2024, by November, World Health Organization recorded 948 confirmed cases of H5N1 in the last 22 years, uh, 21 years. So it's not a lot of cases in 21 years. Uh, the majority of that were serious were back in 2003, 2004. But in 2024, we had 66 cases here in the United States, 66 of them since March. And you may remember in the media back in March 2024, the first human case, and the dairy farms being in, in, involved. That originated, that was first detected in the Panhandle of Texas. And then the first death occurred this past month out of Louisiana. This is, um, the human infections by state, California's got the most, we've only had one detected in Texas almost a year ago. And so this is where the 67 cases have occurred, mostly among people working with animals, poultry and/or dairy farms at this point. Uh, this is the mental model I just wanted to present to you, it's kind of like our, what we think of going through as far as, is there a new virus, influenza virus that may be affecting us? Uh, investigation, this has been going on for a long time. Do we have H5N1? What's it doing? Is it infecting family members? Uh, where did they get it from? And the recognition, so that's been going on for a good while. But in January 2025, we're in the recognition, possibly, we're afraid moving to initiation of pandemic, that's the concern, hasn't happened yet. The initiation of a pandemic would be efficient human-to-human transmission, and we don't have evidence of that yet. Uh, the risk of a virus becoming pandemic, there's a protocol at the federal government where they pull together the DOD, the CDC, FDA, USDA, and the other acronyms, with their experts to get together and talk about, what is this virus like? The properties of the virus? How well is it mutating and going among different animals? The pop, uh, the attributes of the population, in our case, we don't have immunity to it. The viruses that affect humans are in the H1 and H3 part of influenza, and up until about 1972, H2. So H5 has never been seen in humans as far as an efficient, uh, pandemic or epidemic. And the ecology and epidemiology of the virus. Now, I will say that influenza can reassort. It's a segmented genome, and these different parts of the genome can reassort if they're infected in the same animal. Uh, swine, pigs are the, the model for that, where they have attachment points to the virus in the respiratory tract for bird flu and attachment points for human flu. And so in, in 2009, we saw a reassortment of some animal influenza that infected pigs came out as H1N1, a new variety that caused a pandemic for us in that year. So that's part of the concern, it may not be just H5N1, but what it will do to human flu as well. So it's a, it's a variety of things. And they answered questions about likelihood of the virus becoming pandemic and the likely impact of the virus. So with that said, oh, um, it's a moderate pandemic risk on the federal government scale, and the last time this was done, I believe, was June of last year, after it was noted in a number of dairy farms. However, the current risk is low, so not worried about getting H5N1, but there are folks that we are concerned about and are being monitored. Now, going back to the signs and symptoms, I mentioned 2003, 2005, uh, about 60% of the people who actually got infected with that strain died, so it was a high cas fatality rate, but not many of them got sick. The current signs and symptoms for this Klay is a bit different, and it's not your typical respiratory, it's mostly conjunctivitis and pink eye. Now, there have been some severe cases, hospitalization in California, Louisiana, and one in Canada, where they had respiratory symptoms and they were hospitalized. But, uh, the eye redness and conjunctivitis is the predominant, uh, thing. We've had some severe, not much hospitalizations, and that's why we're calling it low. Exposures, direct contact through occupation or backyard flocks, the person who died in Louisiana had a backyard flock that died. Uh, there was evidence that he had been in the wild around wildfowl before his flock died, so possibly he could have trafficked home on his footwear. Um, and he was infected there and eventually hospitalized and passed. So, uh, people dealing with infected poultry, they're out there in the hen houses, defathering, slaughtering, preparing for consumption, uh, all those type of things, people in the dairy farms. It affects cows a little differently, is through the milk, and they get mastitis at the otter. Um, and very high viral loads, uh, in that milk. And, um, of all things, not only was it detected in people, but, uh, cats were noticed to die off, uh, so farm cats who drank the contaminated milk died. Not all, but got sick. And recently, there's been a small outbreak among house cats that were fed, um, contaminated raw meat, uh, for their food, and, and commercially. So that's been recalled. Environmental exposure, uh, for example, down in central Texas, Austin had a, uh, park with a, um, a lake, a pond, where a number of, of ducks and geese that had migrated and died. So you don't want people, you know, trafficking through that and walking through, so there's the environmental exposure. Household exposures, if you're living with someone's a concern. And then so far, in the last three years, especially this year, uh, this past year, a little over 22,000 people exposed that have been monitored for, uh, a few days to see if they develop anything. So we're, we're, just to let you know, we're not seeing human-to-human trace, uh, transmission. Cases are reported. Emergency departments are unusual trends, I'll show you a graph of what we kind of look for there. Waste water surveillance, uh, newer thing since the, in particular during the pandemic with COVID, being able to take samples out, out of the sewer plants or out of pipes, and determining what's in there. We did it for COVID initially, but other, um, other organisms, we looked for flu, both H1 and H3 for type A, uh, and we can do it also for this one, H5N1. Testing a positive influenza specimens, um, and that's what Dr. Byrd just talked about, asking every hospital to subtype from H5, uh, from a type A, is it an H3 and H1? And that's what can be tested for commercially and usually in clinical labs. If he, if it's not one of those, we want to know about it, and our public health laboratory can test it further to presumptive testing for H5. If we were to find it, we'd go to CDC for confirmation. Uh, some of the commercial laboratories CDC has worked with, Quest, LabCorp, ARUP, if you're familiar with those, to do H5 testing, Quest is on board, uh, LabCorp's got one, ARUP is, is getting there. So, um, that's a little bit about, uh, the concern and how we're looking for it. This is a, this is me pushing the wrong button, there we go. This is a graph of, of our syndromic surveillance of, uh, ERs here in Tarrant County. The red line is the current flu season, so this is an example of what we look at, people coming in with influenza-like illness. The blue dotted is last year. So you can see this season, we were following last year's season until, uh, about 10 days ago. And I will tell you, that red one has gone up to 26%, 28%. So over a quarter of the people coming to the ER have flu-like symptoms this past week. We would be looking for similar things in the ERs if we thought H5 was being transmitted. We change our definition, we would look for the signs and symptoms that the organism's actually causing, like conjunctivitis, and we'd have a concern about respiratory, because when it's respiratory, it's more serious. The responses, I talked a little bit about surveillance, the lab testing. CDC has tested a little over 88,000, uh, flu specimens in the last couple of years coming from the commercial labs, and they found three cases of H5. So really rare. Most of them are being found as a result of monitoring farms where infections are occurring. Uh, California, they have a little over 1,100 dairies, they had them all tested, over 700 had outbreaks. I believe 110 have come off their quarantine period. So really concerned about the workers there. There's PP recommendations. I don't know how many of you have ever been around or worked on a dairy farm, I have, and wearing a mask is not something you do, right? You're on a farm. So it's difficult. There are several candidate vaccines in the strategic national stockpile at the federal level for using against H5N1, but not directly against the clade that's circulating. There are newer mRNA vaccines that can be developed faster. They're in the pipeline. So we're doing continued surveillance and trying to describe who's being affected. And I talk fast enough so we can get any questions you may have.
Councilor Martinez?
So we have a lot of folks in Fort Worth that have, you know, outdoor chickens, and in my case, I have an indoor one. So I have lots of questions. So what does a sick bird look like? Are they just lethargic?
They get lethargic, and they usually get pretty sick really quick. For example, laying hens will stop. One day they're fine, the next they're not.
Okay. So how long does the illness typically last in the bird before they pass?
That's a good question. I don't know.
Okay. Usually when it's respiratory, it's pretty quick. But how are the birds spreading the disease? And you talked about it, you know, with those wild foul, but, you know, just thinking about my chickens in the backyard, is a pigeon going to be able to fly in there and contaminate them or?
I think it's mostly, it's mostly foul.
Okay.
I won't say pigeons can't be infected, but it is a fecal-oral route. It is, is feces being deposited and another bird picking it up.
Okay. And do we need to report dead birds if, you know, one of our?
If you have a backyard flock?
Suspected, yeah.
Yes, the Animal Health Commission takes those reports. They like to know because they're protecting animals of commercial interest, right, of significance. And so you can go to their website, they did have a list of places, now they consider poultry only commercial operations and backyard flocks separately, and they had a list by county who are affected. And since 2020, there's a good number here in the metroplex.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm doing my part, you know, to keep my flock safe, my family safe, and the general public safe. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, council? Oh, Councilor Flores?
Thank you, Mayor. A question about mastitis in cattle. Antibiotic treatments, you know, for cattle are in cases where they might be, you know, H5-related, is that recommended over lactation therapy?
Yeah, so there's no antibiotic for the virus. And typically, I haven't been around a dairy in years, but when a cow got mastitis, we would pop it with an antibiotic. And I'm sure some of that's occurring. But it won't treat, it won't treat this. It's a matter of letting it run its course. There are, some cows do die. The others are not producing well, and then, of course, part of it, you're taking them out of the rotation. I'm assuming you still have to milk them so that they have pain. But when they come back, they don't produce as what they did before. So you have lower production of the cows that survive. The Animal Health Commission had emergency order in place that lactating cows would not be, could not come to an exhibit like our stock show or for show unless they had a PCR negative test at certain veterinary labs in the last seven days. And that was part of their attempt to keep lactating cows from mixing and transmitting them on each other because it is being transmitted among cows.
So veterinarians are required to report to health officials if they detect or know of an occurrence in livestock?
Yeah, I believe through the Animal Health Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Questions, council? Dr. Bird?
Mayor, thanks for having us out. And consider this an open invitation to come to the Public Health Department and to our Biosafety Lab 3. We process white powder envelopes and all kinds of nasty things there. It's really something to see. And Mayor Matty was kind enough to come out, I think in December is when?
Very impressive. Thank you for having me.
Anyhow, thank you all very much for having us.
Thank you, Dr. Bird. Council, our next presentation is with Mike Berry, our Hillwood president, on the Alliance Economic Impact Report.
Okay, well, that's a fun topic for me to follow. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you again for the opportunity to present the Alliance Texas Annual Economic Impact, which I've had the pleasure of doing many years. Can't even count how many it's been, but as I tell people, this is my favorite day of the year. Unless it weren't a good story, unfortunately, most of the years, it's been a good story, and it is today. Julie Fisher of Hillwood is passing out hard copies of the Economic Impact Report so that you'll have them. And I know there'll be some extras, and they're also available digitally. So Julie's here with me today. Reid Getz of Hillwood is also here. So if there are any hard questions at the end, I'll let them handle those. So we celebrated 35 years, if you count the way we do, and that's really sort of from the opening of Alliance Airport, which I count, December 14, 1989 was the actual opening day for Alliance Airport. So, you know, you can depend on how you want to use a start date. We celebrated 35 years of development last year, and we have since the beginning, because a lot of the original infrastructure, which was in the form of the airport and roadway and water infrastructure and wastewater infrastructure, was funded on the front end by the public sector, primarily the city of Fort Worth and then the state in the case of some highway improvements, and the FAA in case of the airport. So we felt a responsibility over the years to report out the performance of that investment, that original investment, and then investment that's been ongoing by the public sector over the years. And it's been, it's been fun to do. And I'm glad we started doing it early on, and the cumulative story is, just continues to grow, and all of the graphs are doing this now, which is, which is fun for us because makes life a lot easier when you, when things begin to grow organically and you're not having to drag everything in new. So I want to talk about those numbers, want to recap some of the highlights of 2024 and talk about a few things that we're focused on for the future. So this is the master, the regional master plan for all of the Alliance Texas program, which is in total 27,000 acres. It's not all in the city of Fort Worth, but a huge percentage of the land is in the city of Fort Worth, not just what's south of Denton County line, but all the way up to the Speedway and that area. And then the newer projects, which are mostly residential communities to the north, are in the cities of North Lake, Argyle, and Denton. But the majority of the economic impact comes from that big block of blue land, which is where all of the commercial development is concentrated, centered around Alliance Airport, the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Intermodal Rail Hub, and the highway system. So the cumulative number at the end of this past year was $130 billion. That's cumulative from the beginning all the way to date, and we've got a formula, a model that in-site research conducts every year, and they run all the new tax and physical investment through that model, and it ripples through the multiplier. So that's the, that's the total, 130 billion. Just if you look at 2024 alone, it was 10.2 billion in direct economic impact in that one calendar year. And this is the graph that shows the growth of that over time. And you can see incrementally each year, it's beginning to get bigger and bigger year over year. So last year was our largest, almost our largest increase, 10.2. I guess between 2021 and 22 was 10.8. But it's gradually year over year growing in terms of individual annual economic impact. So that's a good thing. You know, the best number maybe from your perspective is the taxes generated off of the project. So we do count, this is, you know, real dollars. We count every year the tax revenues that come off of just the property. So this is real property and personal property, but it doesn't extend beyond that. So there are no sales taxes in this number. So the Q to date is 4.1 billion. And I remember, it doesn't seem that long ago, but I remember, I think maybe Mayor Moncrief was in the seat, might have been early of Mayor Price's, when we surpassed a billion, and that seems like not too long ago. So once again, that, that sort of escalation is starting to really take hold. The Fort Worth portion of that 4.1 is 826 million. And then you can see, obviously, the school districts, because their tax rates are higher than either the cities or the counties, the school district total revenue numbers are bigger. But Fort Worth stands, in terms of the municipal and county stack, Fort Worth stands at the top of that list in receipts. And this is the, once again, this is the graphical view of that, and you can just begin to see how that, how that graph is, is shooting more vertical, which is a good thing. Just some of the other pieces of the program, there are now 590 companies at Alliance Texas. The, my favorite number is the jobs. So 66,269 people go to work every day at Alliance. At least that's our count. You know, there's a lot of changes in how the workplace works today, so I'm not sure I could tell you that there are 66,269 people onsite every day, but those are the payroll numbers from all of our corporate residents. And then there's 60 million square feet on the ground, and we're actively building new spaces. We speak, just starting a couple of new projects right now. So that number's going to grow as well. If you look back over 2024, we had some really significant milestones. I think you're aware of the $80 million infra grant that we received for the Smartport, which is a big mega project that we've been working on now for a few years to make Alliance more of an efficient intermodal hub and inland port. And that particular grant will link the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Intermodal Hub and Intermodal Parkway out to 170 and provide a seamless trucking connection. So there won't be any stops. They'll just be able, the trucks will be able to just flow seamlessly onto the 170 system. It's a, it's a big, big piece of infrastructure. And I guess under the current uncertainty around federal funds and the administration, we're hoping that stays alive, but we're tracking it every day. Other milestones, we had the first HEB in the city of Fort Worth opened last April at Alliance Town Center. We did a big expansion with Henry Schein, the world's largest dental supply company. And then we opened a 1.2 million square facility with Southwire, who's a major player in the electric transmission distribution business. And then most recently, and you all are very familiar with this project because you were very involved in helping secure the victory for Fort Worth, Bell announced that they will stand up their first state-of-the-art manufacturing facility for the Bell V280 in what was a former manufacturing facility that Stanley Black and Decker had, and they left it, and Bell was able to capitalize on that and take it over. So I think great outcome there and hugely positive for the city. We had a presentation from Lisa Atherton, the CEO of Bell, yesterday on sort of the big roll-up of that program. And, you know, I think the economic impact, we can't even measure what that program may mean for the city in the future, but I think it will be significant. Around the airport, Embraer announced a major facility commitment to Alliance. Embraer is one of the largest OEMs of commercial aircraft in the world, major supplier to American Airlines, and they're going to be building a new MRO facility for their E-jets at Alliance. And thanks to the council, that project was also expedited because of your involvement. AVX Aircraft is another, a smaller company, but they announced their headquarters at the airport, and they stand to grow and be one of the leaders in vertical lift solutions. And then a lot of expansion and investment on the airport to continue to improve it for the growth in operations. I might add, we were named, last year, we were named the 20th highest volume cargo airport in the country. And you might say, well, 20, that doesn't sound very big. Well, we're the only airport in that list that is a non-passenger airport. So most of the big passenger airports, a lot of air cargo travels in the bellies of passenger aircraft. So they, a huge percentage of air freight is credited to passenger activity. So we're just cargo-only in that measurement. So that was a big, that was a big, big plus. In addition, we finished last year the main lanes for 170. I don't know if any of you, I'm sure Councilman Blaylock has, and Councilman Larisdorf has driven 170, and some of you may have. But if you've driven it for the last 30 years like I have, and you drive it today versus what it used to be, it's pretty amazing. And it'll just be a catalyst for more connectivity and more growth in that, in that quarter. This is the map that shows that grant that I was telling you about. You can see down there in that highlighted boxed area is where the actual connector lanes will be built. So all of those, you know, those 4,000 trucks a day that come in and out of the BNSF intermodal hub will be, will be more efficient getting on and off the roads with that, with that improvement. This March, we'll host our fourth annual Ford Fort Worth Conference, which is a Supply Chain Mobility Innovation Summit, again at the Drover. It's become sort of a must-attend event for a lot of the leaders in that, in that industry, and it's really helped us develop more engagement with, with the new, the next generation of mobility innovation. South Fort Worth, we don't talk about that much. Most people don't think of us down there, but we completed, or we started construction on a project for Dick's Sporting Goods this year, and that completed our development of what was about a 250-acre project that now includes Amazon, Continental Tire, and Dick's. We wish we had more land in South Fort Worth. Quite frankly, we didn't realize it was going to explode like it did. We would have gotten, gotten a little ahead of the game, but we're done down there, so we're looking for more land. And, you know, all in all, I think, just based on what we've seen in the first 30 days of this year, it's pretty, it's pretty positive from the standpoint of corporate activity, corporate interest, new capital investment that's showing up. I'm pretty excited about, about what this, what this year holds. I do want to, I thank Councilwoman Bivins, did she leave? Oh, sad. Is she gone for the day? Well, I wanted to, I want to make some comments about her because, you know, she's pretty much an amazing woman, and, you know, she's been here a long time and done a lot of great things, so.
I bet she'd be okay if you did it twice, Mike. Mary Pretten would be just fine if you said them twice. So if you want to do it today or you want to wait, either way.
So with that, I'll thank you for the opportunity again to present the update, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Questions from council? Councilor Larisdorf?
So Mike, thank you for that information. Definitely good news stories, so I appreciate that. And I also appreciate Lions and Hillwood being good partners when it comes to city and the projects. Talking ISDs for one second. I'm sure you've heard all about the potential color ISD split, you know, funding, the reasons behind it. We won't go into all those shenanigans, but as Councilwoman Beck has to remind me, we have to break things down marine-style for me. There's a lot of commas there. 816 million, right? I get my commas right? 816 million in tax? 816 million in tax revenue for Keller ISD over that period? And then geography is also not my strong point, but looking at the map, not really seeing any projects in Keller area. I'm assuming that's.
No, sir.
And then looking at the, the cities that your projects have impacted, I mean, Hazlet, Roanoke, Westlake, also not part of Keller ISD. So it looks to me like that's going to be a huge financial impact in a negative way to Keller ISD as a whole. Not necessarily the west side of 377, which they're talking about being the, the boundary. So we're not going to discuss what's, who's on the right or wrong side of the tracks in this conversation. We'll save that for another night. But just looking at last year, that's $51 million in tax revenue from your guys' developments and projects to the Keller ISD School District. I got, I got those numbers right, correct?
I think, I don't have the, well, I don't have last year's annual, but if you're getting that off of what we gave you, yeah, that was last year's number. The aggregate number is the eight.
Yeah, that's.
The eight.
816 million.
But you're, you're correct that none of that was generated from the eastern side of 377.
Yeah, that's, that'd be a substantial negative impact over, to the overall ISD in that case. But well, thank you, that, that's incredible numbers and impressive information. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Blaylock?
Mike, I just want to thank you and the Hillwood team. You all have been incredible partners with the city and with the community. And, and I, I just look forward to continue to see great things out of your organization. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Alan.
Yeah, questions from council? Excellent job, Mike. We really do appreciate you. Thank you, thank you.
My pleasure. Appreciate it.
Okay, council, we have one additional presentation. It's Fort Worth Sister Cities Annual Update. And I believe, is Val Washington kicking things off? Is that right?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council and City Manager Chappa. I know Sister Cities generally comes to mayor and council annually to provide an update on their prior year successes and any issues that they had to work through. And then they provide strategies on their upcoming year, just to get mayor and council excited about that. Generally, they don't need an introduction because they're regular players as we work here in the city. But we have a new CEO and executive director that I want to introduce as we start this presentation since May Ferguson has retired. Kippen is the new president and CEO of Sister Cities. He was appointed in October of 2024 after an extensive search by the Sister Cities Board. And I believe, Kippen, you have several board members here that you'll introduce when you come up here. He has experience in international relations and not-for-profit leadership. Sister Cities promotes Fort Worth as a cultural and educational gateway. They see big opportunities as the World Cup is coming to the region to help with diplomacy training and other items like that. And with that, I'm really proud to welcome Kippen so he can come up and provide the annual report for Sister Cities. Kippen, if you don't mind coming on up, or Kippen or Cindy? Perfect. Thank you. And Cindy, you might want to come to this microphone.
He's, he's going to do that part. He's going to do the hard part. Good afternoon, Mayor Parker, Council, City Manager Chappa. Thank you for the opportunity for us together to present a partner's report because that's really what this is. I'm Cindy Johnson, the Chair of the Board, and we'll just make a couple of brief comments. But we celebrate today 40 years of partnership in efforts towards our mission, which I think we're all aware is to, to promote Fort Worth globally, to enrich our own community and to do that through international education, international exchanges and international commerce. And it really is a partnership, and you know this because each of you as council members are the official liaison to one of our sister cities. And Mayor Parker, we continue to be delighted that you're the honorary Chair of our organization. So thanks to each of you for the effort you make on our behalf. It is our honor and task to put wheels under this initiative year after year. And we do that through the, the nine sister cities that we have, through the connections we have with 500 other communities and 2,000 partnerships in 180 countries through Sister Cities International. And you know that Carlo Capua is leading that initiative at the moment. Valerie did ask for us to come and talk about 2024 and 2025. And she's done a wonderful introduction of Kippen. I just need to add a couple of things. We did do a national search. After 25 years of excellent service with, with May, we really wanted to do the right thing for this next time in, in the organization's life. And so what Valerie didn't tell you about Kippen is that he originally was lured to Fort Worth by the Museum of Science and History from his home state of Hawaii, where he was for 13 years Chief of Staff for a member of the Hawaii House of Representatives and an additional 12 years as Executive Director of the Alone Palace, which was the royal palace in Hawaii. So he has a rich experience in terms of his work in the world. He's lived abroad, he's studied abroad, he has an executive MBA, he speaks four languages. He really is a citizen of the world. And so it is my pleasure to add to Valerie's welcome and introduction, my pleasure to introduce Kippen the Alba Chu. He'll give the rest of the report.
Thank you, Cindy. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. I would like to recognize the board members that we have here today. If you wouldn't mind standing, we have Greg Jackson here, Fernando Costa, our most recent board member, and then I see Stasa Irvin, Keller Cromar, Sean Born. Thank, oh, and Ronnie Corb there in the back that you just met.
Thank you all for coming. Fernando, I think, has some extra time now, so if you need to sign him up for any additional projects, he's your man.
All right. Thank you. So as we celebrate May Ferguson's long tenure leading our organization, we look back at key accomplishments over the past year. We're, we're also going to share with you some of the things that we have planned for 2025 on top of our award-winning programs we currently offer. All right. Oh, there we go. Simply put, we do exchanges on behalf of the city of Fort Worth so that people can connect on a human level. A lot of the behind the scenes effort goes into making these exchanges happen. And this is one area where we excel. This is our current list of the nine sister cities we have. We are exploring a 10th potential candidate in Canada, the city of Calgary. We recently hosted a reception along with Visit Fort Worth of a group from the Calgary Stampede, which is the, that city's annual rodeo held in July. Councilmember Beck welcomed the group at the National Cowgirl Museum. This year, we have three adult exchanges. The first is to Italy in April, second to Indonesia in June, and the third to Southern France in October. All right. Looking back at the year 2024. So these are the numbers of the actual exchanges we've done and how many people we've impacted. For this year, we have youth exchanges going to six different countries with a total of 85 students. Based on the data that we collect before and after our programs, we measure what the outcomes are. Those areas listed represent the most significant improvements in our, for our students. We should also remember that many of the friendships forged during our programs will be lifelong. I was just at an alumni gathering hosted by Carlo Capua this past Sunday for folks who participated in our International Leadership Academy 32 years ago. All right. The impact of our programs can be life-changing and alter the professional trajectory of our alumni. Monica here is a great example of someone who participated in many of our exchanges, enrolled in our International Leadership Academy, then became a facilitator and mentor to other students 15 years ago. Today, she is based in Chicago and in charge of placing interns from Albania, Estonia, Latvia and Lithuania with US companies to gain professional experience. As Cindy mentioned, we incorporated on June 26, 1985, making this the 40th anniversary of our founding. Coincidentally, 2025 also marks the 40th anniversary of our very first sister city, Reggio Emilia in Italy, which occurred on October 29. Of note, we are all, already working closely with Carlo Capua on a number of projects, including the annual gathering for Sister Cities International, which will be taking place here in Fort Worth in July. Carlo has been an incredible resource for us and an awesome connector of people. Okay, so as we move into the night, the new year, we are going to be intentional about our role in the workforce development ecosystem for Fort Worth. For example, in working with employers, we will focus on those skills critical for leadership in an organization, whether it's a global, global company, a local nonprofit, or the city itself. Also, please keep in mind that we are a resource for you all for next year's FIFA World Cup of Soccer, and we stand ready to assist in whatever way we can. This is just a sampling of the skills that we can teach, which are inherent in our programming. For example, we are exploring a potential partnership with PNC Bank to offer financial literacy to our youth participants. Giving the costs of going abroad, many of our students work part-time to help pay for their trips. Learning the importance of budgeting and establishing solid credit history will go a long way in preparing them for the next chapter in their lives. Having alumni who are culturally competent, both globally and locally, can only enhance Fort Worth's standing to attract more international businesses. With your financial support, we could expand the number of students being served. And finally, we conclude with the most critical aspect in determining the success of an organization, its culture. As the saying goes, culture eats strategy for breakfast any day. So many of our businesses here in Fort Worth are no longer just local. Many operate in multicultural markets or have teams based globally. The ability to work across different languages and customs is not a soft skill. Being culturally competent is a power skill. And the most important element is being curious about other people instead of judging them. Thank you for inviting us to share with you today the vital work that we do in service to the city of Fort Worth and its citizens.
Thank you, council. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Hill?
First, welcome. Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm thrilled. I'm part of the Cautown Marathon, and I know we're doing the Sister Cities Anniversary Challenge this year. So all those that are participating from all of our sister cities are going to receive a special medal and a certificate. So I appreciate you working with us to make that happen. And I know we have some, I think nine participants from France is what?
18.
Oh, 18. Okay, that's even better. Okay, well, good. So thank you again for that partnership.
Of course. You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Crane, did you have something? Sorry. You're off the hook. Thank you, Kippen. Appreciate you very much. Thank you all for coming today. And to your board members, thank you as well. Council, that's the conclusion of our presentations today. I can open it up for future agenda items as needed. Anybody? Councilmember Beck?
I would like an IR on our historic landmark commission, how it operates, and then a comparison to other cities within Texas, how it operates and what authority they have.
Chris?
Yes, I have quite a bit. I initially asked for an update on the, the police towers. I, I know we have about 12, I think. I want to, when they bring the IR back or presentation, I want to get the cost to purchase more of those police towers. Because as our city grows, we're having more issues with our crime. And I know there are effective in certain neighborhoods. Also, the implementation of cameras on our street lights and signs. Couple of my residents have been asking, I know Gina has some in her district. So I want to see how we can implement those in District 8 and other areas. Also, a timeframe on vandalism to vehicles such as keying cars. What is the time report, reporting that, those issues that has happened? Also, the process of illegal buildings or such as storages on vacant lots without permits, what the city needs to do regarding those. We have quite a bit of those in District 8. And lastly, security at New City Hall. I know we talked about this previous, but I know that the county has up their security due to threats and overwhelming out, acting out, acting out actors. And so I want to know what we're going to do at New City Hall in the chambers.
Councilmember Crane?
Yes, one is just overall, Jay, we talked earlier this, this morning about the process for IRs. What a, as you're going through that, I have this staff action tracking, which we don't get a regular what's out there. We just get the ones from the week before. So as you're going through those, I think just a general, if you're sending it out, send them all out that are still sitting there and the dates. The one I asked for, I think this was back in October, was due January 14th. This is about TCU. I think Councilwoman Beck also jumped in on this one too, but the review of the overlay and portlets and other things in the area. But obviously it's past due and, and been no update. But I don't think I'm the only one that's said that before. And the other, an actual IR is an overview of our, our, if we have any or how we're regulating drones in the area. I know there's a lot of discussion at the state level surrounding military bases, but just overall, there's some proliferation of businesses starting to use drones. I'd just like to understand and citizens would like to understand what we do and how that's regulated, if at any.
Any other future agenda items, council? Nope. If not, then meetings. Oh, sorry, Carlos.
Hey, just to dovetail on Michael's request, I had recently requested that from staff and we got a report on, on legislation and regulation on drones. So I think staff has a starting point there to give us an update in that regard.
Any other questions? Thank you, council. Meeting is adjourned.